We're doing the other one, Wednesday, July 6th at 5:30. And we are being taped by Area 58. And we just need a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Uh, so move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we'll do the pledge.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we have our final interview for town administrator. How do you say the last name?
Uh, go lightly.
Go lightly.
Love it. Marty, go lightly. I think he's here.
He is here.
Yeah. Um, so whenever you are ready, Bernie, we're gonna hand it back over to you on your last name.
Okay, um, go get him.
Hello.
Thank you. Good morning, Marty.
Jonathan. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. You can scoot back if you want. Sorry to put you up so close.
That's alright.
So, Marty, thanks for being here tonight.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me. I really appreciate it.
The, uh, the format that we, uh, have used in this process is gonna be continued tonight. Uh, I'm gonna facilitate the dialogue, basically, with you. Uh, we have a number of questions that the board, uh, is interested in, and they'll have some follow-up questions in each one of those topic areas.
It's possible.
So, um, and then we'll, um, as I say, it's intended to be a, an interactive dialogue as opposed to a, you know, interrogation. So, um, so let's start off with the, the usual interview question that, uh, you know, pick-up interview question. Tell us about yourself.
Sure. Love it.
Why you're here?
Uh, I'm here to be your next town administrator. I appreciate the opportunity first and foremost. Thank you, Bernie. I do everyone for inviting me in. I do appreciate it. I, uh, I spent 20 years in the military, which seems like it was yesterday, but I got out in the end of 2016. Um, mostly healthcare, but when you're in healthcare in the military, you also do a lot of leadership. Did a bunch of deployments, couple of shifts at sea, couple of tours with the Marine Corps. So, sprinkling of emergency preparedness care, sprinkling with, uh, that at sea, overseas, the livings, you know, all of that good stuff. Everything that the Navy could offer you, I think I got to participate in. It was awesome. I loved every minute of it. But I had two young kids, and I didn't want to lose any more dancer title and/or events. So it was time to, uh, say goodbye to that lifestyle. So me and my wife, we moved from sunny Southern California back to here. The beginning of 2017, started a new life. And went to school for a little while, messed around, and became, uh, the health agent in Abington in 2018. Uh, and stayed there until I had a great time. It was an eye-opening experience. Got a lot of experience in municipal government, got a lot of experience in, in leadership there. Got to work with a lot of great people. A lot of the community around here, uh, on the, the Coalition for Public Health Preparedness. Got to meet all of those candidates, members of that, as one of the executive leaderships, the social recital community, got to meet all of those people. Uh, good folks. A lot of people from Halifax, chief, assistant chiefs, captain, uh, packing chiefs, people. So, and here I am, moving on to the next, the, uh, the latest and greatest.
Alright. So why do you wanna be a town administrator? I mean, you...
Public service my whole life. Military, EMT, making the world a little better, a little bit, every day. Or at least that's my goal. I am one of those people that wants to leave behind something better for my kids and for all of our, uh, those, you know, that are gonna come up behind us and train our replacements and teach our children that we can do better. It is just one of those things that I think is in your blood. When you start to do it, you just want to do it more. And I've been doing it in some aspect my entire life. Working as a volunteer, helping veterans write resumes. As an EMT, public service is just the thing that we do. We, myself. And honestly, I think I'm pretty good at it, so I stayed with it.
Okay. Could you, um, you know, this is a question that we've asked all the candidates that have come through to meet with the board. Again, pretty standard, um, you know, sort of why you're interested in being a town administrator, that part of it. Second is, you know, what are the circumstances of, you know, why you left your last position or...
Why I wanna be a town administrator is I'm looking to take the lessons learned in a long career of leadership, 20 some odd years, and, and use those skills and abilities to the best of my ability to make things better. Like, how do I teach my replacement? Where do I find that person? Well, who's the, uh, the next, uh, town administrator for Halifax? Who's the next person we're gonna find? Make sure that we're, you know, making sure the next generation people like. Using those leadership skills, mentoring, finding, you know, your approaches, finding those things are very important to me. Why did I leave Abington? I didn't want to be the director of public health in that town. I didn't anymore. It was, COVID had a, it shined a light in a lot of weird areas of our society. It made some things uncomfortable. It made it some things better in a very weird and unusual way. It just wasn't the right time to live and work in this area.
Okay. Somewhat related.
Sure.
But what do you see as the role, if you, as you look at it, a town administrator? I understand what you're saying about, you know, you wanna prepare your next one, but before you can prepare your next one, you have to be one. What do you see as the role of a town administrator?
Uh, making sure that government and the departments of government, uh, run appropriately and provide the services and the goals of our elected officials. And making sure that the departments are doing what we, as a collective community, have articulated for them, based on the town, governing documents, the state's governing documents, and making sure that services are rendered as they're supposed to be. And making sure that residents are not, um, wanting for the things that we have agreed upon to be delivered to them.
Okay.
Appropriately.
What do you, why do you throw in that word?
I think that sometimes we, I would never want to overreach. I also want to make sure that we always choose education first. I, I will always choose to teach first. So when I say appropriately, I never want to overstep. I always wanna make sure that, um, we collaborate on our decision-making, that we are not making decisions in the towel, and make sure that we're doing the right thing with the right amount, um, impact. While also being mindful of rules, regulations, open meeting, all of those kind of things.
Okay. Alright. How does your management style, maybe you can talk to us a little bit about your management style, your leadership style?
Of course.
And how that blends in with your, your thoughts regarding the role of a town administrator?
I wish the, uh, the reputation for, uh, our military leaders was a little bit different because sometimes we get that, uh, my way or the highway reputation. I can't stand that because as a Navy chief, we've always been taught, you know, you better be humble about your leadership style and make sure that you are collaborating with your peers, uh, with your governing bodies, with whomever that may be. So collaborator-in-chief will always trump commander-in-chief, in my humble opinion. My leadership style is one of mentoring, as I've mentioned, I think, a few times. Snap decisions are appropriate sometimes, so you have to make those especially emergency decisions. But, um, my leadership style is making sure that we make the best decision at the best time. Sometimes you gotta talk about it. Most of the time, you should be collaborating with your subject matter experts, your leadership, your administration, to make sure that you are making the best decision with the most good in mind for the most people. Collaborators-in-chief always do that.
Okay. If you were a town administrator, what would be the, uh, was along those lines, if you were Halifax town administrator, what would you be looking at in terms of, um, meeting with staff? How would you go about meeting with staff? How would you communicate with staff? How would you...
Love meetings one-on-ones. I like, um, that's always been my leadership style, is a, coming up through any organization. I like to meet with the department heads one-on-one. Like to figure out what their personal goals are as well as what your, you know, professional goals are. I like to go to them. I'm more of, uh, you know, I don't like that person who sits in the office, not really in my style. Um, I am a meet-the-people-where-they-are kind of a person. So it's important to get out, to walk around, to be amongst them, to be that person seen on the floor, moving about. Um, I think it makes people more comfortable when they're sitting at their own desk as opposed to sitting behind yours. If, you know, like, this can make some people uncomfortable. Um, and to combat that, uh, it's go where they are. Have a talk. Hey, how are the kids today? Like that kinda thing. Make sure that you are getting to know your people. Um, that's, you know, leadership one-on-one, right? Then just meet them where they are, find out what their goals are. And some people just, their, their goals are to continue to do a great job and that's it, which is hunky-dore, let's do that. And then some people might need some mentoring and some advice, and might want to know, hey, what do you think? And then you offer that. You give that to them. And you meet them where they are. And never press unless it's appropriate. I love that word, appropriate.
I know, I know. I won't ask you to explain that one.
It's appropriate because there are some people who are massively talented and might need a little bit of, and whom, um, and we've all seen that, like seeing that person with just a brilliant mind with no direction to turn head towards, and you find that direction and whoosh, superstar gone, right? Like amazing person. Sometimes it's like, hey, what are you doing? Turn them in that direction and watch them fly. So that's why I think it's appropriate to do that.
Okay. Any board questions at this point before we get into sort of the nitty-gritty stuff?
Marty, just real quick, as far as conflict resolution goes, can you give us an example of a conflict that you dealt with and your resolution to that conflict and your style of conflict resolution?
Education first, always. I, I'll start with how I would like to do it. I always like to teach and always like to talk it through. Um, if we're going, if we have a conflict, it could be a simple misunderstanding, a miscommunication. It's like, I might be making a decision you don't like, I might be making a decision that's unpopular, but I have my reasons, and you might just not know those reasons. Most of the time, communicating those reasons can solve that problem. So making sure that that's where we start the conversation. It's like, hey, I understand you don't like this. Let me tell you where I'm at. And then allow that person telling you why they think it's a bad idea. And then there's a back and forth, a dialogue of that. And this is part and parcel to the job of being a Navy chief. It's just, we are conflict resolution people. I have done it at Boots and Boardroom. I had done it arguing in the, uh, in the mess decks when I cooked, didn't wanna make a certain type of meal for a certain type of person, all the way up into the C-suite and we're even a presentation on why we're spending a couple million dollars on, uh, whatever what. I mean, the most outstanding local, um, immediate answer to that is COVID. A lot of people, like, didn't appreciate some of the things that public health experts had to do in the beginning and in the end. So we always chose education. And did it always solve the problem? Of course not, because there's always going to be a, a function of the populace, a small group usually, that are going to disagree. But trying to talk it out, explaining why we are making that very specific decision and understanding where they are, I think it helped. And then there's been tons of times in my military career where we, you just had to do that. Conflict resolution when it comes to emergency preparedness was another one in the military. Oh, we had arguments over the best way to conduct man-over-board rooms, like, I mean, all of those things. The best way to conduct personnel counseling when we're doing, you know, who's going to get promoted talks, who is going to get, uh, the better marks on their evaluations to be chosen for the next whatever. And then talking through them. And sometimes you argue, but you argue behind closed doors and you come out hopefully on the same side, or if not, with a better understanding of why that person made that decision. I hope that answered your question.
So related to Jonathan's question, how do you feel in a situation where you're the neutral party? So if we have a situation where we have multiple staff members that may not get along, maybe one staff member that's bullying another one, or a situation in that nature, we don't really have an HR department, because of that, a lot of things do fall here. Our yearly evaluations, things that should be happening that may or may not be. So how do you feel about having to deal head-on with different employees in a situation like that?
Do it head-on. It's like you just have to approach it, and you have to remain impartial. If it is your job to remain impartial, it's so difficult. It's probably one of the most difficult things I've ever done as a leader, is maintaining that neutrality, especially when, um, you, you hear these stories of, you know, nice bullying, right? But you have to, like, there is a process that we have to follow to make sure that there is no repercussions for either side. We do it by the book for a reason. And that impartiality, that neutrality, make sure that we don't let emotion guide when we should be following a procedure. I mean, I am a, I am a project person. I am a, let's do it by the procedure. What does the procedure say? And I think that helps keep emotion out of it. It helps keep, like, maintain that, that healthy distance. And we'll just be honest, sometimes you don't, you can't, but we have to try, especially in those, those aspects of HR, where we have to follow a particular pathway that they've set out to be able to do whatever it is the situation calls for. I hope that answered your question, too.
That's, thank you.
Staying with that, uh, you know, those, science get, wander into that nitty-gritty area, but I wanna explore this with you while we're talking about it. You know, it's been described, you know, you'd be the HR person. You'd be the one that would have to, you know, certainly there are other people within the organizations carry out certain HR functions, but, uh, what's been your experience with, you've, you've worked, I'm assuming in the military, you worked in with very set procedures of, that, because it's an established organization that has set procedures. Here, there may not be procedures for everything. There may be procedures that need to be developed. New, new, you know, you know, every community now is grappling with this, you know, remote work issue.
Yep.
Uh, how do you, what's been your experience with developing personnel procedures and policies?
Uh, so yeah, I should probably finish that. Sheriff TP certification, got it.
Okay.
I love writing those new procedures, and when we first moved to the hybrid environment, I, you know, was kind of surprised by the reluctance of some of our employees to, to, you know, embrace the work-from-home philosophy. So we had to make sure that, you know, in the procedures do so, that they have the right equipment to do that. And that was one of our biggest challenges from the outset. Establishing new procedures isn't really a thing that we, that I have not done before. It is one of the things that we did in my last job in the Navy as a department of training and standards. Standards being the things that we wrote, um, specific to every department on the ship. So while we should, you know, I can help write those standards, uh, the magic always seems to happen in that gray area. That's where, you know, like, that's where you really learn the most. So coming up with the standards and then finding out the areas where it doesn't apply, so you can learn to where to write the next one a little bit more appropriately, a little bit more with, with some more granularity. And then, and then following them, trying to establish them, trying to figure out what's, what's next, what's bet, what's better. Does this really work is another question we should be asking ourselves. Was this a waste of our time? Because if it was, why are we doing it? Best practices. What does research say?
So on that point, I think, one of the questions I had was, um, one of the worst things, I think, to hear is, we do it this way because we've always done it that way?
Right, yeah.
So I would hope that you're the type of person that coming into this position would be open-minded to revamping existing policies and procedures if you think there's a better way to do it, not just because it's easier to follow what's already in place.
Please. It is one of my biggest pet peeves, honestly, is the, uh, well, that's how we've always done it. Especially when technology has allowed us to do some things more efficiently. And that mindset, I've always found, is, is content towards the negative. So if we are always establishing a best practice or looking for a better practice, then we should do so, because it allows us to do some things more efficiently. And I think one of the, one of the fears we get, other, other than the unknown, because we have a nation, you know, us as people have a fear of that, is the workload seems really heavy initially. But, I mean, like, I'm sure you know, like, once you get past that initial load, it's like, it gets easier as you do it, which gives us more time to then do that with every other, uh, practice that we have around. So we can finally get into the weeds and some of the other things that we've just been neglecting, for lack of a better term, because we have an old-fashioned way of thinking, because that's how we've always done it. It absolutely drives me insane from being a hundred percent, especially when technology can help with a lot of the other things, or just, you know, a simple open-mindedness of, of forethought can help guide us a little bit.
Thank you. Um, again, stick, while we're there, staying with personnel, collective bargaining and interaction with, you know, union employees.
Weirdly, I had more union experience in the military than I did in town hall. Helping negotiate with our CNAs, our certified nursing students, that's the clinics that I worked at, and with the medical assistants. And I was happily, oh, and, I mean, in negotiating with the, uh, our trash delivery system, the waste management and Republic for Abington, and I'll happily take those over medical assistants and CNAs any day, brutal. So I had a little bit more experience in the military with that. Collective bargaining for those units where they gave us a very specific set of parameters, and we had to stay with them. Been a union member and on the other side of the table, and comfortable on the negotiating side, and have always interviewed those things respectfully. You know, our union, talked to our police union, talked to our firefighters' union. So while I am not altogether unfamiliar with collective bargaining units, I, I do have more experience in the military than I do from the town, which seems a little weird.
Financial management. What has been your, what's your experience with or your comfort level with municipal finance and budget preparation? What have you, what have you done in those areas?
Um, the budget for the departments in Abington. I'm a numbers nerd, love, you know, economics, love math.
A good numbers guy.
Yeah, love spreadsheets. I do very talk to the love mine, excel on pages and numbers, spreadsheets. The RFP for our trash contract, the budget for our waste management, budget for the special services department, which included health, zoning, building, uh, nursing, and some sprinkling of other things. The biggest was the waste, because it was, we had to override about 1.2, and it usually would be about 1.6. And we had to, like, forecast those numbers based upon monthly pickup, and take standard deviation from each month, month, and try to predict what your next year's rates would be. We kind of went pre-formula, and you put those numbers in, into a formula, and you get pretty accurate. And then the, obviously, the salaries and the, and the rest of the education and other for the departments. Around, I wanna say, two, two and a half, maybe. But as the numbers got, it was, it was never, never that challenging to make sure that you stayed around there. And that was another thing in the military, we always had fiduciary responsibilities to make sure that we were spending our money responsibly. And it was a little bit stranger in the military, because we, we budgeted a certain amount than it was, you know, in, come October, in September, we're like scrambling to spend as much money as we possibly can, all the way up to next year. Whereas, you know, we all spent all our money here, and it's like, wow, great job. So that was a, a switch I had to make sure I hit before. But, okay.
Keep that switch on.
Yeah, yeah, keep it on, keep it on. It's a good switch.
I was just gonna say, kind of to that effect, any grant writing experience?
Yes, I went to the Grant Writing Management Institute at UMass Boston. It was fabulous course, uh, great guys put it on. Uh, wrote the public health excellence grants for the communities that Abington, wrote the R, uh, excuse me, wrote the RDP grant every year, wrote a few AARP grants, wrote quite a few other grants, uh, here and there for miscellaneous, you know, little pots of money there and there. But the biggest one was a 1.1, 1.2 million over a couple of years for the public health excellence grant, and then the RDP community grant every year. So council-wide in grants and have been for a while.
Going back to the, um, the solid waste, you had mentioned that, um, you, you involved the, sort of the forecasting that went into that, and, you know, you had mentioned that in your preliminary interview with us. We had talked about, a little bit about that, and, uh, you know, as you know, reached out and spoke to some of your references, and they, they, several of them mentioned that as well, the work that you did in that area. What, um, what was your mind, what was your thought process when you, how did you go about, I'm just curious as to how you went about doing the forecasting? What are the variables that you looked at in the forecasting of the solid waste?
So I have to start with it. I don't know if I even told you this, but I should probably start with, like, the beginning. Like, I had no idea about any of that industry when I first took the job, and I have no clue. I took it in May 18, and I don't remember if you remember, in June, July, I'm sure you remember it, in June, July of 18. Our recycling went from being a commodity to, we had to pay about a hundred dollars a ton for removal. Uh, and it was like a massive expense for every community, basically, in the states. So I went from knowing nothing about that industry to having to learn all of it essentially in a weekend. Oh, and now we're gonna be an RFP writer. Oh, and now, you know, I need you to figure out how much our recycling cost is gonna be for the next however many years. So to do that, you know, we went back through, we, I looked at all of the tons that we paid over the last couple months and last couple of years, and then figured out the, the most expensive months, and then forecasted out, trying to predict with using, you know, plus or minus five to, five to eight percent based on those costs, based on a known cost increase, based on a known prevailing wage cost increase, what it would be over the next couple of years. Trying to actively predict whether we could come in under our override or not, especially with the increased cost in recycling. No, we couldn't hit it if it was, if recycling is still gonna stay about a hundred bucks, because there's, there was no way. So developing all of that to help the, the budgetary process and the financial responsibility process, uh, I don't, I'm, I'm weirded out to use the word fun, but it was super interesting to go through that process, because I got to learn all about an industry while I was nerding out over numbers to try to make it make sense. Figure out where our money was gonna be spent. And then, you know, networking through that industry to try to find the best deal we could when we went out to contract, when we went out to bid. Uh, and I, and, you know, you could take that and essentially move it to any other budgetary constraint. And that's what I tried to do for public health nursing until COVID was like a big hit that shook everything up.
In terms of the, uh, Abington did an override to do the, to do the trash. You know, what's somewhat different is, in the role of town administrator, is, um, you know, it isn't just, and I don't want me to oversimplify this, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, in the, um, department budget that you had, or even in the military, you handed a, a number.
Mm-hmm.
And you say, okay, this is, this is your budget.
Yes.
You can submit a budget request, certainly, but they tell you what your budget is. Uh, here, um, you, working with, um, town accountant, the other members of the finance team, the finance committee, you have to, you know, the board, you have to do revenue estimates, you have to know where the money's coming from. Did, did you learn anything during that process regarding, about, you know, Proposition Two and a Half and how that all...
I had to figure out where our receipt came from. Where's our, where's our income? What's our tax rate? What's our, what is our forecast that, uh, money coming in this year? Did, just for context and for nothing else, uh, what was our increased, uh, spending? Where's our health insurance? What's our, um, and then, just because it made sense to me and I could kind of like learn more about it, to make myself smarter in that area, kept going with it. And where, where was our money coming from? Because honestly, that's just, that, that was the, the hole in my game, so to speak. That was the, that was the, that was the education piece I was missing. So have to learn it, uh, if you wanna get better at the job. And that's what I did, like, where, what's our number? What's our precise, what, what are our businesses bringing in? What is it costing our businesses? What new, we had a few marijuana shops open. What do they actually bring to the table, because a lot of people were talking about? Where, you know, they're gonna bring us tons and tons of money. What was it? How hard was it?
Similar to that, and we...
Similar to that, when we asked before, what would you do? I know you're talking about education and teaching and, which I love, but in your situation, what would you do coming into this if there's something you don't know?
Oh, I'd find my subject matter expert. I got a large network of, that sounds a little bit prangidosh, sorry. I got, I got a lot of friends I can ask if I don't know the answer to a question. I have, I have this, I have the board, I have Bernie, I have, and I thought I have a lot of people in my phone that I can humbly ask. That's one of the best things about being a chief, I wish more people would do that. When you get into the chief's mess, the, the first thing you know is, they, you have to kind of admit that you don't really know everything. So you have to learn to be humble enough to find your brother, sister, rather, and say, hey, can you help with that thing? And that was like the best tool that a 30-year-old at the time could have learned. And it seems so silly now, oh, you're gonna call your friend who knows the answer to that question, of course you are, but a lot of people won't do that. I don't have that problem. I don't know a thing, I find a person who knows that thing and then make them teach me that thing, sometimes against their will, but, you know, you pay them back a piece of beer, whatever it's gotta do, but I wanna know, so please help me.
Project management, have you had any experience with capital budgeting?
I was on a capital planning committee in Abington, so I cannot altogether unfamiliar with it, I wish we could have done more, honestly, because it is one of those areas of interest that I, I thought was interesting, that I just didn't get a chance to do more of. But, so yes, but, you know, we can always do more.
Okay. And procurement experience, you mentioned the RFP, did you, how did you go about pulling the, did you write the entire RFP or?
Yes, me, yes. Obviously, you don't do anything by yourself, you have a lot of subject matter experts look at it, you have a lot of, you know, people that are experts that'll help you with it, we did, I did. You have to put a copy of the 30B provisions right over your desk and you print it out and you write your RFP, look up a 30B to make sure you're not doing anything that's against the rules.
Okay. You don't, you don't have your MCPo?
No, I have the first one, the overview, of course, I just never needed it before.
What's something you'd be willing to do?
Of course. Especially now that they're all online, you don't have to go into the city, hallelujah.
You know, it's a topic.
Books on tape.
The gas prices nowadays, you don't wanna go something.
Exactly. In terms of other project management, I imagine the, the COVID work that you did, the pandemic work related to the area communities and all could be seen as a project. What's the, what lessons did you learn as you managed that project?
I also have a lean black belt.
Okay. What, I'm sorry?
Lean Six Sigma is a, is a project management certification. But it's, I hate saying black belt, it's like, ooh, it sounds vaguely. The COVID taught me a lot, and one of those things is like, it allowed me to expand my network, right? It allowed me to like find a bunch of other smart people. People don't know that a lot of our fire chiefs had master's degrees, a lot of our police chiefs also had master's degrees, and a lot of people are like really brilliant human beings who taught me a lot. Chief of Arrows here, I worked with him, I worked with the two captains, I worked with a lot of the people from Halifax, first responders, and they taught me a lot. East Bridgewater, all of the surrounding communities, I get to work with all of the first responders, and they were really great humans. Managing the distribution of the COVID vaccines to first responders, especially at the outset when it was really hard for us to do and hard for us to get the state to cooperate, that was tough. So we fought tooth and nail and we tried our best to make sure that we gave multiple options. Like, that was the lesson I learned in the military. If you have one aid station and everybody's rushing there, don't try to beef that one up, open another one and you get like more people to go. It's kind of a, it seems like, you know, simple, but when you do that, it works. So that's kind of like what we did, you give multiple options for multiple people to go to. We set up our, the regional site with Bridgewater State, with all of our chiefs around here who manage that project, and they needed a local liaison, and I worked with them managing that project and they're, they're good gems. So not just COVID, I've done a lot of other project managers that worked from boots of boardroom A to B types of, whether it was starting our food collection, food waste in, you know, 35 to 40% of the waste stream is food products, though, trying in organics to get costs down by taking the food out of the trash. Was a successful method.
But you went into?
Not all products, no.
Being a town administrator, you know, really includes being, well, can include being the face of the, of the town government, you know, interacting with the community. How would you go about becoming, and you're from, from Abington, admittedly, you've done work in the Halifax area, but how would you immerse yourself into the community, get to know people in the community, and how do you go about doing all that?
I'm gonna go find Bob Valerie, I'm gonna go get the veterans agent, and we're gonna go to the senior center, and we're gonna go out to the events, I'm gonna make sure that people get to know me. I'm a big fan of the office hours, right? The like, the town, like, come get a coffee with your TA kind of thing. I actually think that, that works for most people. You can't do it on a Monday morning, who's had time on a Monday morning? It's ridiculous. And I like be available, be out, go to the fireworks shows.
You got a good one.
I know, I talked to Jason about that. Like, be, like, just be there. Being there, I, I view as way more than half of it. Being available, being a decent human being after that. The rest of it will kind of take care of itself.
Maybe sort of related?
And we're veteran, so like I have an instant end, right? Like I can start talking about stuff, so it usually gives me like, I can tell war stories too.
Related to that of how you immerse yourself in the community is, I guess, a question of, what does your first 60 days?
Oh, you gotta get to know me. You gotta get to know my style, you gotta get to know my personality, you gotta get to know my, my little idiosyncrasies, right? I gotta get to know you, I gotta get to know the team, I gotta get to know the department in the election coming up at the end of the month, that's what we max it, gotta be involved in that, make sure that, you know, all those things that need to get done, get done. Relationship building, I would argue is probably the first couple of months. Reviewing financials, having a good turnover with. No, I'm saying, sorry, Ed, I didn't, I will never forget you. Making sure that, you know, we get, we gotta get that back here.
He wants to say.
Respect. As you were gonna say, if you're gonna spend a quality time with him, you've got to chase him down the street, so. So, all right, okay. I guess my last question would be, you know, the most important relationship that you have is with the board. What would that relationship look like? How would you interact with the board? How would you communicate with the board? What do you, what do you see as that? What would define success?
Frequent and often, text messages, phone calls, Zooms, in-person, coffee time, I'm guessing would be all of those things, including our meetings would be important. Like, we have to be, I need to know your goals, I need to know what your thoughts are on that, because that's the only way I'm gonna be able to move forward with what you see with that, with a plan for our collective vision. So we have to get to know each other. I need to know that, you need to know that I know where you stand on most of it. So frequent and often would be my answer to the, how are we gonna communicate?
Something happens in town, there's a terrible car accident, or, you know, there's a big grant that you get, bad news, good news, whatever.
Let's go to the big grant, Frank, it's impossible.
You get the, you get the big grant, what do you, what do you do in terms of the board?
Are you like after the communication piece or?
Well, I guess related to that.
Okay.
Hey, I don't, I don't care about that, we're gonna assume you're managing that grant, but in terms of, the word comes down from the governor's office that you got a $2 million grant for something, what's, what's the, how do you let the board know?
Phone calls right away, it seems the most obvious and important one, right? And then allow them or to, you know, use whatever method you prefer to alert the town and then using whatever method that the town public affairs has to alert our residents and then go from there. But it would be, it would first start with the phone calls.
Something we remembered to ask a couple, but we forgot, would be what would your timeframe be if you were offered the position, what is that like for you?
I'm not really doing anything other than consulting right now, so I'm pretty open.
What are you consulting for?
Just healthcare. Boring stuff like, cool inspection and how to like manage your facilities with doctors.
Sounds really exciting.
I think that covers all of our questions, but.
I just had a quick one, Marty, just how familiar are you with the town Halifax?
It is my favorite place to ride a bike.
I bet it is, yeah.
The roads are my favorite place to ride a bike, I absolutely love it. Like, I know it's a ridiculous thing to say, but it is, that's like what I associate Halifax with, is my, my favorite place to ride a bike. The 105, that I like from here, turn right over, right over there and go all the way down to like the middle bar.
Yeah, it's a beautiful road.
So that's it, and then, I am, because of COVID, I have become friends with a lot of the firearms, right? My strongest, like, the people that I like to deal with the most, the coolest people, like, the most professional, the best ones, and I would say this irrespective of this position, have been from here. Like, my best interactions were with your previous chief, or with your, both of your captains, with your team.
Phenomenal police and firearms.
You get no argument with me in that, your police and fire are.
Some of the best.
Absolutely.
If not the best.
They're up there, for sure. So I got like this positive, I think you said five, but it is a positive vibe, it is a positive mindset towards this entire area.
And a little bit too, and I might be putting the cart before the horse, but do you have a, a vision for this town? Because a lot of folks in town love our small town feel, but complain about high taxes, you know, and then you have the people that want more business but would lose the small town feel. So do you have, and I know it's, you can't crystal ball it, but do you have kind of a vision for where you see Halifax going in the future, or is that too early to put?
I don't know if it's too early to talk about, but we would, we collectively would definitely have to discuss that. How, and I think a lot of communities in the South Shore are struggling with that right now. How do you keep a small town feel in a modern world? Because, you know, people moving here are gonna want modern conveniences, they're gonna want, you know, large shops, they're gonna want a cool bagel store or whatever, but how do you keep that, how do you get that but keep the, you know, like, the open spaces? How do you keep, how do you get that but keep that small town vibe? It's, it is a problem for the ages. It's gonna take some creativity, some businesses that bring in large amounts of taxable revenue but have a relatively small footprint. I'm sure they're out there and it's gonna take a while for us to really figure that out. I think a lot of the communities, citizens around here, effectively, are gonna have to really buckle in and try to, try to manage that, because you don't wanna lose the hometown feelings. Why, people wanna move here for that, and, well, you can't have both, so. Or can we?
Maybe we can.
Yeah, maybe we can.
I actually do have another one more question. I said I didn't, but I do. You've never been a town administrator before. Two members of this board are brand new. One member has been here for just.
Pretty much all of them.
A year and a half, two years? How do you see that?
I kind of like it, honestly. You go to the municipal conventions, you know, you look at the town administrator, town manager population, I'd probably be the youngest at a, at a, at a ripe young age of 45. Sorry.
Not the oldest one. I write, well, I'm 47.
That's third too.
So it, it's interesting to, we talked, like, just a second, how do you maintain that small town feel and like, and bring new ideas in? Well, how do you do that? How do you bring in some younger new ideas but also maintain that small town feel? Because you have to have some forethought, you gotta have, you know, there's gonna be a passing of the torch eventually, you have new, new people, new ideas, younger, the next generation's gonna have to take charge, so you have to make sure that you, you know, the people that you've replaced, that replaced you, that, you know, to do a good job of training. So it's exciting to come up with the, the next ideas, right? Our, our best practice is forward to make our spaces a lot like we grew up in, you know, like, make our spaces ideal for our kids, make our spaces, you know, as inviting to those people that want to go.
I think too that this part is new, and obviously I haven't served with them very long, but I will say that they both bring a lot to the town and a lot of positivity. And I think us being a board that has younger children in the town, all of us, that will help direct the positive growth of the town in a respective way, because we want our kids to be able to grow up here and we want to be able to afford to continue to live here. So I do think the board will bring a lot of perspective and that nature. And I can't imagine any of the board telling you this is the way it's been done, so I'll have to go that way.
That's why I asked.
We actually would like to not do that, so.
I would also like to not do that.
Other board questions? Not, I think we're, we're done.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to meet you, Marty.
And see you again.
How do you know Marty?
We met through the health agent in Pembroke.
Oh, okay.
Lisa Callady.
I've known Lisa for a long time.
So Bernie, I think the first important question is, we had three candidates before, we had Heather, Ed, and Dennis.
Yeah.
Of the three, who is still available?
I spoke to all three of them today, they are all still available.
So I'm very happy with the decision.
Nice decision.
We made, not saying I told you so, I'm very happy with the decision we made to move forward and make sure we didn't have any other candidates. Marty was amazing and we didn't lose any of our previous. So that being said, I'm open for discussion on the four candidates that we have sitting in front of us.
I think all bring different things to the table. I will admit too, I was very impressed with Marty. Again, he's green, we're a green board, but I do think, given his military background and given his, I don't wanna say zest, but he, but he seems to be able to attack things and, and not only just do them, but want to do them well.
He does have some town, you know.
Right. He's written grants, he's written RFPs, he was in the thick of it through some of the toughest times of COVID. I did do a little digging too, for Abington folks, and they were sad to see him go. They, they, a couple joked with me that if we didn't take him for administrator, they wouldn't mind grabbing him over there, you know? So I'm impressed with Marty, very impressed.
I am too. I certainly can't fault him for not wanting to be working where he lives.
Yeah.
I appreciated his, his mindset and his attitude, seems like go better. I didn't, not that I got this impression from many of the other candidates, but it didn't seem like he was using this as a stepping stone to something else. He seems like a, kind of grab the bolt by the horns, and if there's a problem, he's gonna address it. I like him.
So I feel the same way, I think he was great, I did a little digging, I talked to a lot of, even our town employees, past town employees, people that we know in the area that know of him, I didn't hear one bad thing about him, I actually heard a lot of this would be amazing for our town. So that being said, and considering he seems pretty flexible to be able to jump right in, if there's no more discussion, I would entertain a motion pending contract negotiations.
Second?
From Marty, Goletly, as our town administrator.
You make the motion.
Yeah, I need a motion.
Oh, I thought you, I'm sorry. I would like to make a motion to, to name Marty Goletly to the next town administrator pending contract negotiations.
Second?
All those in favor? There you go.
Wow. Well, there you go.
All right. Okay. So I will let the candidates know of your decision. And with contract negotiations, it's in your court. I'm there as a, you know, sort of a backup to help, as the technical assistance if needed. But, you know, if you have town council that you can work with, there are standard contracts out there. Have to sort of pass something like that along, but I think your council, I'm sure, has a version that they use as well. And probably Charlie left a contract here that could be.
Sure, 792 files in there.
Exactly. All right.
All right.
Bernie, thank you for your, going to love and be on, Bernie.
Oh, certainly.
Letting us talk a little bit, we appreciate it.
Not a problem, not a problem. I didn't know what else I'd do.
Are you excited or what?
I know.
Are you gonna be a campus?
He's a free man. Finally chewed through the rope.
He's gonna be sad with you.
Yeah, it's true. He can still come. Every day he can still swing by. I drove by your playground today, actually.
Well, I look forward to working with Marty, you know, and getting him straight. And like I mentioned to Alex, I met him before, you know, through the health agent in Pembroke, Lisa Calady, so.
Do we have a plan for transition? I mean, I'll be honest, this is my first go around with this.
I don't think, again, every community is different. In some cases, there's some sort of, it's nice to have a little bit of an overlap. I wouldn't encourage, long to respect Ed, and Ed probably wants to, wanted to, but I wouldn't expect a long overlap. You can only have one town administrator at a time. And so you wanna have, I would say, a period of time, appoint him to be town administrator on an effective date. And then perhaps have a contract with Ed for a number of days to stick around. But I'll leave that up to you guys to figure out how you wanna do.
And folks, Sandy Nolan has offered to be part of the transition team as well.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy.
I think that'd be great. Wonderful. There's the financial whiz that.
You heard it. He loves spreadsheets.
That's it.
The numbers guy.
Guys can geek out.
He's never seen Sandy.
Well, it's exciting.
Yes, I'm glad. Thank you. Thank you guys too. Thank you.
All right. So that being said, our next meeting, we are in joint meeting with the finance committee Monday at 6:30.
Thanks, Bernie.
Have a great night.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bye.